Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Candidate Forum for the Tawney Town City Council. We have four candidates that are running for three open council seats. The general flow tonight, the candidates will each have three minutes for an opening[37.54][37.54]introduction and some brief remarks. Then, when we get to the question phase, they will have two minutes to reply to each question that are posed either that we've gotten in over the electronic airways or from the citizens who are assembled here this evening. When we are done with all the questions and everybody has been satisfied, each candidate will then be given three minutes for a closing remarks in trying to encourage the citizens watching and assembled to vote for you for one of those three council seats. I'd like to get a couple of thank yous in real quick before we get started. First off, the Tawney Town Fire Department and auxiliary for letting us use their hall. We were running out of space and we were trying to do a live event as opposed to any kind of a Zoom electronic event. And so, they stepped up to the plate and as occurs in this wonderful community every, ever so often, the two groups got together for the good of the community and we thanked them very much for their assistance. Certainly thanked the four candidates for standing up and stepping out into the public's view to be subject to questions and comments, but glad to see that you're there, do your civic duty, and try to work for the common good of the citizens of Tawney Town. And certainly not, not to the least, the citizens who have shown up and I expect more will roll in as the events occur, we certainly thank you for your interest in the candidates and the council election coming up on Monday, May the 3rd. If you are microphone shy, there is paper over on this small table and you want a question asked, right, if you write the question down on the piece of paper delivered to our table, we'll see that the question is asked. If not, when we open up for questions from the audience, if you'll step over to the microphone and ask your questions. And I certainly shout out to the folks from CMC, Community Media Center, they're back in the kitchen, but they're not eating, they're really working. And we certainly thank them for being here tonight, setting up all the equipment and doing not only the live broadcast tonight, but this is going to be taped also and it will be run in a cycle on Channel 19 for Comcast TV. And it will run continually in a cycle with other municipalities between, we'll say tomorrow and Election Day on Monday, May 3rd. So, we thank everyone for helping us to do this. This, I checked it back, I think it's the fifth or sixth year that the Chamber has sponsored a Candidates Forum, started out with Lou Jordan, Lou's no longer with us, but we're carrying on his tradition. And Lou was the president when he started, so I'll ask the president now, Chris Tillman, if he has any remarks.
I just want to say, I thank everyone for being here on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce. I thank the folks that have come to join us here in the live show. I thank the candidates for coming. And I thank the folks that have sent in questions and if anyone has a question they'd like to send in, there's still plenty of opportunity to do that. You can either message it to the Chamber Facebook page, to the Community Media Center Facebook page, or you can join on the event, on the event page on Facebook, you can join the discussion and enter, enter your question there. We do have a few questions that have come in already and we have some questions that we would like to ask and we encourage anyone who wishes to step up to ask a question.
And I gave you the full opportunity, you didn't take it.
What's that?
I'd like to thank our timekeeper who volunteered to be here this evening. Candidates, I will tell you, I was looking at the clock in relation to Barbara's position on the end, you really can't see the time, but the arc goes completely around in red. So, that'll tell you when you're just about out of the two or three minutes. And you'll see that when they, when she hits the start button, you'll see what I'm talking about with, it's a complete circle on the face of the machine. You'll be able to see it very well, but not the times. The candidates for this evening, from left to right, and these were drawn by, out of a bag, randomly drawn, we have Ms. Diane Foster, Mr. Joe Vigliotti, Ms. Judy Fuller, and Ms. Barbara Cook down on the end. They are the four candidates who are here to run for the three vacant seats on the city council. And if anybody has a question right now about the proceedings, I'll take it. If not, we're going to start with the candidates for the three-minute opening remarks and introduction. And we'll start with Ms. Diane. We will be rotating throughout, but it's the first remarks, so Ms. Diane, you'll start us off and we'll go left to right.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out this evening. I'm Diane Foster. I have been on the Tawney Town City Council for eight years. The last three years, I have served as mayor pro temp. I served two years under the previous mayor and I've been pro temp to the present mayor for one year. I also am the liaison, as the council refers to it, to economic development. And as many of you who are sitting out here know, there's been no economic development for the last 13 months. But recently, we hired a new Economic Development Director who is getting out to meet many of you and we are looking forward to resurrecting the business community in Tawney Town and bringing in some new business.
All right, if you're done, we'll move ahead to Joe Vigliotti. Your opening statement, sir?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Whether you're here or watching online, thank you for being with us. Thank you to the Tawney Town Chamber of Commerce for always putting on these forums during election years, and thank you to the Community Media Center for always filming them. And thank you also to my fellow candidates for running as well. I'm genuinely able to call each of them a friend and I think that they all have good hearts. I'm Joe Vigliotti. I'm a writer and graphic designer and I've had the honor and privilege of serving you as a city councilman since 2013 and I'm seeking that honor again. The past several years, we've experienced some unexpected and transformative events. National and state issues have touched us locally and we've had our own challenges and trials to contend with, as well as everyday work we put into serving our community. We've successfully managed to push through, do well, and achieve some important things. We've backed our police, who have been essential to keeping us in the top 10 safest cities in all of Maryland. We cut the water and sewer rates not only years ahead of schedule, but we've maintained those same rates. We have not raised taxes, we've been very careful about spending, we've been able to pay down roughly a third of our debt. We've enacted family-friendly zoning to help keep neighborhoods, parks, and schools safe. We've prioritized needed projects at parks and added more family-friendly events. We've implemented business-friendly policies and programs such as sidewalk displays and free customer parking passes. We have new homes being built, we've seen businesses expand, and we've seen new businesses open up. Personally, I've made sure to make myself as available, accessible, and as responsible as possible, responsive as possible through any number of means and forms of communication. That also includes being around town and personally participating in events. I stand by this service and my record, look forward to discussing these and other issues more in depth, and I look forward to answering your questions. It is an honor to be here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Joe. Ms. Fuller?
Good evening and welcome. I'm not going to repeat some of the accomplishments because Joe stole that thunder. So, I'll just say that the last four years have been wonderful and enriching experience and it's been an honor serving the citizens of Tawney Town. I'd appreciate the opportunity to continue to improve upon our services and create beneficial impacts for our city and businesses. I'd like to continue to work on projects that create alternate revenue streams for the city as we look ahead to the future and our, kind of our growth as we, as we come to that impasse where there won't be anymore. As a member of the Planning Commission, that's one of the things that we, we consider. I have lots of long-term goals that I'd like to see to fruition and will facilitate the council and the mayor in all the capacities related to other projects. I look forward to continuing to work with citizens and further open communications so that everyone can be informed and involved. I love our city, I know that there's always room for improvements, and I'd like to be a crucial part of that process. I wish the best of luck to all of the candidates up here and I appreciate what it takes to offer yourself, you know, as a public servant because it is not easy to do and it's not to be taken lightly.
Thank you, Judy. Mrs. Cook?
Yes. I'm Barbara Cook and I would like to introduce myself. I was born on the shore of Lake Erie, just south of Detroit, and my father was in heavy construction. When I entered elementary school, we moved to a farm halfway between Chicago and Detroit. It was a chicken farm with a huge orchard. You can learn a lot about humans watching chickens. The hens do all the work and the roosters make all the noise. But there's one thing I miss about being on a chicken farm is the roosters announcing the beginning of each day. When I got to about seventh grade, the farm was traded in for a hatchery. And after we'd been there about a year, we woke up early one morning with a loud crash and the furnace had blown up. And we rushed out the back door, down five steps, and there was thousands of baby chick bodies all over. It was pretty shocking. We got to my senior year and my father, my family went back to live on the shores of Lake Erie and I was accepted at Western Union School. When I graduated from that, I was assigned to the main office in Lansing, Michigan. I was there for a while and the Michigan State Highway Department opened up a Western Union small office and I was asked if I wanted to head that up, so I went over there. Michigan was making the model for interstate highways. They said someday it will go from California to New York. Sure enough, it did. About that time, my husband graduated for college, so we moved to Maryland where he worked for the United States Public Health Service. How is my time?
20 seconds.
20 seconds.
Okay. Well, Maryland is my home and I've been here ever since and I plan to stay.
Thank you, Ms. Fuller.
Thank you. All right, I want to read one statement here for all people that are assembled. We ask that all the participants, candidates and citizens, keep their remarks and discussions civil with no personal attacks, please. And now for the first question, I'll ask our president, Chris Tillman. And when he starts the question, the first person to field the question will be Joe. We'll start with number two position.
This first question came in via the internet from Kelly Bowie, who actually stole my thunder on this because she asked exactly the same question I did. I think it's an important question and I'm not looking for detailed answers to this, but, but just some general, general approach, I think is more what, what I would be looking for as an answer. What do you see as the most pressing issue facing Tawney Town today? And if elected, what would you do, again, in generalities because it's hard to speak in specifics at this time, but what do you see as the most pressing issue facing the town today and, and how do you see addressing it? And Mr. Vigliotti, we'll start with you.
And remember, two minutes on the question replies.
So, I think probably the most pressing issue that we face, it is hard to choose one, but I think there's two of them. The first of all is that we have to continue to support our police department. With the state of the nation and the state of things going on elsewhere in the state, it's important that our police are, they have the manpower and they have the resources necessary to do their job. You know, it really is not an accident that we're one of the top 10 safest cities in the state and at a time when elected officials and others are backing away from the police, we need to step forward and have their backs. The other thing I think is certainly getting our fiscal house further under control. We've made a lot of progress over the last four years, as I had mentioned in my opening statement. We've managed to pay down one-third of our debt. That gives us financial flexibility, that gives us adaptability, and that allows us to better handle challenges and the, the day-to-day operating costs of the city. So, between supporting the police department and making sure we are continually fiscally prudent, I think those are the two primary pressing issues that we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Ms. Fuller, what do you see as the most pressing issue facing Tawney Town today and what would you do to address it?
Like Joe said, there are several to choose from, but I think at this point, it would have to be the, the future of the city and how we plan on paying for things. You know, we have a very limited amount of space to spread, which is a good thing because we stay a small city, but that also kind of kicks into our revenue because once we're done building, we don't have that money coming in. So, we have to figure out ways to, in the future, be able to pay for the services that are obviously going to get more advanced and, you know, fancier, for lack of a better word, without having to raise taxes and make the citizens actually put more out of their pockets.
Thank you. Ms. Cook, what do you see as the most pressing issue facing Tawney Town today?
Before I start, I would like to say, I can hear Joe, I can hear Diane, but you are, it's an echo.
Oh, okay.
I can hear very little.
I'll face you a little better.
What I see is that Tawney Town has a lot of history and a lot to give, but right now it seems to be in a stage of sleeping and it needs to wait to wake up.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Fuller? How would you answer this question?
Ms. Fuller already answered.
I'm sorry, Ms. Foster. I'm looking at you, Diane, and I don't know why I said Fuller. Ms. Foster, how would you answer the question?
I obviously think that economic development is the most pressing issue. Our businesses, who are barely hanging on, are just that, barely hanging on. We have to, there's money coming down the pipe from the county and the state daily. We are doing our best to see that these businesses get this money and hang on until things get better so that they can continue. If we, if everybody shuts their doors, I'm talking business, and goes away, guess what? We can't keep the tax rate the way it is. So, obviously, I think that economic development is one of the most pressing issues. I look forward to the end of this pandemic and some return to normalcy and, like I said, helping our struggling businesses to hang on and stay and recruiting some new business.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And now, we're going to move on our next question and we're going to follow up on the question that, and the answer that Mrs. Foster just gave us. And, and now we go to Mrs. Fuller to ask this question. Is there a master plan for economic growth in the city and what would be your plan?
I don't know if there's a master plan. I would say the plan would be to have it succeed. Having our new economic developer come in, he's got lots of new ideas, he's, you know, trying new things, he's coming from a different place, as, you know, I think he did restaurant management. He's, he's really, really gung ho and he's met with everybody on the staff, I think everybody with the council, the mayor, all of the businesses. I think it's just really important at this point to be able to draw the people in, however that may be done. You know, we need to incentivize, we need to, you know, make it be a reason for them to be here. And as we expand on that, I think more people will come and we'll be able to really, you know, find more places for businesses.
Ms. Cook, what, how do, how do you see, what would be your plan, master plan for growth? How would you, how would you engender economic growth here in the town?
I have a plan that would preserve the history and the buildings of Tawney Town, the historic part, and at the same time, would move us into the 21st century so that we could move ahead like a team of horses and do them both at the same time. It could be a team of palominos or it could be a team of horses with a beer wagon. But I think it needs to be done at the same time. Clydesdales, that's the word I was thinking of.
Ms. Foster, what would your economic master plan look like?
My economic master plan would involve bringing in some new businesses and new varied business. I don't know exactly what that entails, you know, what specific types of businesses, but it would be different shops to make Tawney Town a destination place. We had some of those in the past. I think the master plan should work at getting some of those types back. It's been over two years, we worked with a consultant about two years ago who gave us some very good ideas for what those type of businesses should be. I want to get back to that.
Sounds like a good idea. Mr. Vigliotti, what would be your master plan for economic growth?
So, I'm not necessarily sure I would have a master plan so much as that I want to be flexible and adaptable to a business environment because in a free market system, businesses and, and the environment itself are going to change over time. And so, when you have certain issues that arise, for example, one of the things that we've dealt with over the last couple of years was concern about parking. And the mayor and council came together and in a very creative way, in order to deal with metered parking for businesses, we came up with a program for free customer parking passes. You know, that's not exactly the, the kind of thing that you can structure into a master plan, it's one of those things that you have to, you have to take as they come. So, with the new Economic Development Director, as Councilwoman Fuller has alluded to and as Mayor Pro Tem Foster have both alluded to, you know, there are going to be new ideas and fresh ideas coming in. And one of the things that I personally would like to see happen, and this is something that I've started to, to talk about, is I want there to be better communication between the business community and City Hall. And so, what I'm proposing to do, or what I would like to see happen is like, I guess you could call it an executive committee that would consist of the mayor, the Economic Development Director, whoever, whichever member of council is the Economic Development Liaison, the president of the Chamber of Commerce and one to two members of the Chamber of his choosing. And this executive committee would meet at least once a month and then both the business community and the city would know exactly what was going on with one another. There would be an open line of communication scheduled every single month. Ideas could be sent back and forth. The mayor could say, hey, council's working on this. The president of the Chamber of Commerce could say, hey, these are the concerns the businesses have. And then both could go back to their respective groups and say, hey, this is what we found out. And that would help with that flexibility and that adaptability to come up with creative solutions to the problems that arise. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that answer. I'm going to open it up to the audience right now. If anybody in the audience has a question, they'd like to come up to the microphone, you're welcome to come on up.
And when you use the microphone, you can remove your mask and the folks from the media center ask that you not touch the microphone. If you need to adjust it some way, they will come out and do it for you. So...
Okay, I'm here to discuss a gazebo that you folks built in the park, the expenditure of it. I met a guy on the street this morning and he told me that he asked a question to an elected official of Tawney Town as to how much that gazebo cost. And he was told it was none of his business. A few minutes later at that time, he recanted, he felt he made a mistake, I guess, by saying that, and he said that gazebo costs between $150,000 and $160,000. Now, you'll have to tell me if that's not true. I believe it is because I heard it from several people. I have a three-car cement block garage, peak roof, good five, or good roof on it. And if I got the inside of that garage, I could get that gazebo inside the garage. I'm assessed at $9,000 and I could get a $155,000 gazebo inside of it. Something don't seem right there. My garage is old, gazebo's new, if that makes a difference. But what I'm wondering, which of you three in comments voted in favor of that expenditure? And would you raise your hand, you don't, if you did? That's, that's the question I had. And as far as the downtown parking, you mentioned that. I've been in town, lived in the business area for 61 years, had a business for 54. Parking has been a subject every year. Thank you.
Do we get to follow up with that?
What's the question on that? Well, I appreciate your comments, sir. There kind of was a germ of a question in there, what can be done to address the parking situation? And now, we start with...
Barbara.
Start with Mrs. Cook. What do you think can be done to address the parking situation here in town?
Well, my idea is that we would buy a fleet of small vehicles. They might be golf carts, but they would be some very small vehicles. They would be parked down near Memorial Park. People would park in Memorial Park, they would get in these small vehicles. I don't know if they would have a driver or if they would drive them themselves. If we had drivers, that would be jobs for young people and somebody would have a business this way. I originally thought of this for Annapolis because they don't have parking. Annapolis is just like us. So, I say have everybody park down at Memorial Park, get in these small vehicles and take them around town. I think it would be a hoot.
I think it would also. Ms. Foster?
Guess I'll go out on a limb here and say that I think that more has been made of downtown parking than is the problem. On any given day, there's plenty of parking on that street downtown and nobody's there. So, I don't know who's complaining about the parking and when they're complaining about it. The city employ, there's a city lot that people can use. Of course, it's, it's meter, there are meters on the street. The employees have been asked to park on the back lot and not use that city lot to free it up for people who want to shop. Now, like I said, for the last 13 months, nobody's been shopping anywhere, so there's not a parking problem. But I feel like there's been more made of this parking situation than it really is.
Thank you. Mr. Vigliotti, how would you address the parking situation in town? Or is there one?
I'm sorry, I, I'll associate myself with the comments made by Mayor Pro Tem Foster and point out that we have, you know, taken the extra step to go ahead and develop the, the free customer parking pass program so that even in a situation where somebody is confused or, or does not want to have to pay for parking, it's there. I mean, it should be pointed out too, that the meters were initially installed in front of the businesses because some of the businesses were concerned about residents who were parking... of the businesses because some of the businesses were concerned about residents who were parking in the spaces and taking up customer parking spaces. So we had to install the meters. And then not all businesses were happy with the, I'm sorry, not all customers were happy with the meters because they had to pay to go into the businesses. So the free parking pass program was an easy way of finding a common ground to handle both sets of concerns. And if I might, I do want to talk about the point that was addressed by the gentleman in the office, or I'm sorry, in the audience of the gazebo. I can certainly understand the concern with the expenditures regarding it, but it wasn't just, you know, a slab of concrete and the gazebo itself. Levelling had to be done, bids had to be put out. It's wired with electricity and it's already being used in different events. So it's not like it was just simply a slab of cement and we, you know, put up the covering. There was a lot of work that did go into it. The, as a matter of fact, just a couple of weeks ago, the Easter Bunny was using it at the Easter egg hunt. So hopefully it will ultimately come to, you know, prove its worth. And I hope that helps to address some of the concerns that you have with that. Thank you.
Councilwoman Fuller?
I'll start with the gazebo because that was kind of an area of contention for myself, too. What we bit on or what we had originally said yes to got changed over time as well. There was a lot of issues that came up. I can't say that it was handled very well, but the people that were in charge of doing those decisions have all moved elsewhere. So I think we have a better formula for future decisions. And I can attest to the fact that Lorena goes out of her way to make sure that all of these projects are well thought out, well planned, and she is being very fiscally responsible as far as those projects go, which is why she's able to get the, that main entrance. They're redoing the memorial part of it. You know, she's looking to get these big projects done for much cheaper. As far as parking goes, we do have, you know, we do have off-street parking. I think people are a little bit afraid to parallel park. And I know that those lanes for parking are not very large. I don't, you know, I'll do it. I don't care. I'll stick my car in there. There are a few properties in the city and some empty spaces that we could look at down the line for maybe putting smaller parking areas in. But, you know, those are all things that come up for discussion and we have to figure out how to be able to make that work as well as buy the properties or the areas. But it, I've never had a problem finding a parking spot and, you know, I, again, I think it's just a matter of preference. If, you know, people don't want to walk, but they will walk all the way across a Walmart parking lot to suit their needs. So that's where I stand on that one.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone else here in the audience have a question right now? Good time to ask. If not, we do have one coming in from. We did have one come in on the internet from Emily Ott. What are your top three goals as a representative of town? And what's a goal that you would have for your time in office that maybe you haven't mentioned or thought about yet?
And we're back to Ms. Foster.
Back to Ms. Foster.
Okay. At the risk of repeating myself, bringing some new business into town, some new varied types of business. Did you say three goals?
That was the question that was asked. What are three goals as a representative?
Okay. I'm so focused on economic development.
We like that. Speaking for the Chamber of Commerce, of course.
And I, another goal.
The key to the future.
Okay. We're in office four years. This maybe could happen in four years. But I'd like to revisit some of the plans that were talked about maybe two years ago. We talked about a planetarium further down 194. I'd like to open those talks. We are working on it, so I'd like to see Bollinger Park, we're planning a nature park. I'd like to see that developed. And maybe, we have a very competent Parks and Recs person, so I'm sure she's on top of this, but we have some acreage at Memorial Park that we've been trying to develop. I'd like to see us move ahead on that.
Mr. Vigliotti, your goals?
So I think three areas of my potential time in office would certainly be, again, at the risk of repeating myself as well, certainly supporting the police, certainly being fiscally careful, but also as the mayor Pro Tem talked about, you know, supporting businesses, finding a way to improve the business climate as well as to incur, continue to make sure that we have a very friendly or family-friendly atmosphere in town. I think probably, I mean, what was, the last part of the question was about one.
You have one, one specific goal in your time in office?
So I think one thing that I would like to see is, one of the nice things about Tony Town is we're kind of isolated up in the northwestern part of the county that has a lot of really positive things about it. We're quiet, we're kind of off to ourselves, but, you know, it also has some challenges as well. And so one of the things that I would like to see, our police department and our fire and rescue are amazing. They're absolutely amazing and on a day-to-day basis, they are phenomenal with the things that they have to deal with. Their professionalism, their courage is incredible. But given the relative isolation that we find ourselves in, God forbid we ever encountered like a serious natural disaster, a couple of main roads go down and we're kind of on our own. And I know it's been some number of years since the city, the police department and the fire department got together in some kind of a conference to go over natural disaster procedures. Where all three agencies, the city, the police department and the fire department would be able to come together and say, well, if this is, this is what's going to happen, this is how we're going to deal with it. And again, given our relative isolation up here, I think it's very important that, you know, given the nature of things, natural disasters, whatever, that we're prepared for that when it comes. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Fuller, what three goals would you have and what, what goal would you have for your time in office that maybe you hadn't talked to anybody about yet?
One of the things I'd like to see get done is kind of an overhaul of all of our departments to make sure that they are all running and being taken care of effectively and efficiently. You know, when it comes budget season, we see a budget and we see what we spent the last couple of years, but we don't really get the, you know, the typical layout of exactly what everything is for. Like, I'd like to see if there's anywhere that we can go down and start kind of streamlining and maybe save some money throughout the city on stuff like that. I'd also like to, you know, continue to look at ways that we can have alternative revenue streams. Like I mentioned it earlier, you know, I don't, are, the way we make money is through taxes. That's how we pay for stuff. And I know it's a really touchy subject to people, but, you know, there are other ways that we can bring money in. That is probably why, you know, as my third thing, which is not a secret, I am heavy on the Christmas. If I can get people to this city throughout the holidays, whether it's looking at decorations on Main Street, coming into shop, I am, you know, really going to be like a pit bull on the whole park. If we can establish some kind of drive-through and make money that pays for itself, and then eventually maybe we'll make money, as well as I want that splash pad ice rink. I mean, I really, really want it. I see no reason, you know, we had the pool and I think it was just a management issue. We can, we can get an ice rink for the winter to make money and we can get the splash pad to take care of our citizens and make money, kind of like they do with the Littlestown pool where they, you know, charge you if you're from out of the city. So.
Ms. Cook, what would be your top three goals as a representative of town?
Well, Tony Town has a rich history which we aren't taking advantage of and has buildings that need to be preserved. That's one thing for me. And the, one of the next things is to get these trucks out of downtown so that we can take back our town. If we want to have dancing in the streets, I think we should be allowed. And in 60 years, nobody has really gone down and put the screws on Annapolis. And it seems to me that there wasn't even a letter ever written. We've got to get proactive. If we just sit here and mildew, nothing will happen. So that's number two. And then we need to modernize. In my thoughts on all this, I've told to one person, only one person so far, because as soon as three people get told, the naysayers, we have people in this town that shoot down every, every, every thought. So if I'm elected, I will tell the council.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. Is there any other questions from the audience?
Please come on up.
Step up to the microphone.
Come on up.
Oh, what happened to ladies first? Now, I know, she gave you leeway. I appreciate that.
Ladies preference.
So I know you guys talked about parking earlier. And there is, there's plenty of parking, but the problem with the parking and the problem with walking through downtown is the big trucks coming through. If you wanted to take kids down there, for instance, me and wife have a bunch of kids, you can't really do it with them being comfortable as there's just loud trucks blaring through the town. The same goes for the parking. If you have a car that you want to park, I only park on the Main Street if it's a last resort, which normally I'm disabled, so I'll go park in the back even though that's not where I want to be. And I'll make the lawn walk just because I'm not comfortable parking my car there when you also see semi dump trucks, mint trucks coming through there as well. So I guess my question is, what would you do to make people more comfortable going through the downtown with these loud trucks going through and actually getting people to come down to that downtown? Because honestly, I don't like going down there myself just because of the trucks, the loudness, and it's just not a comfortable place to be with a family or for conversations.
And Joe, you're going to start this question, but I would add, I thought one of the things the gentleman was going to say was, the one thing I'm concerned with when I park on the Main Street is opening the door out into that traffic because some of those people are going through there mighty fast. I know the police department's good, but you got that big truck rolling through there, you're going to lose a door and a body at some point in time. So, Joe, you're starting off.
Thank you very much for that. So there are a number of options that we can look at in terms of the traffic downtown. I know there's been some question about maybe we could add some more stop signs, maybe another traffic light somewhere to help break up the flow of traffic. And then one of the ideas that we talked about some years ago, and it's also an idea that our current, our new economic development director has been considering, is finding a way to, and the police chief has also talked about it as well, is finding a way to reduce the speed limit itself. So if you break up the flow of traffic and then you slow the duration of the traffic, that would certainly, I would hope, you know, make going downtown a little more comfortable. And I'll be completely honest, I share that same concern. When I park and I open up my door, I don't want to open it up into oncoming traffic. But I know that one of the other ideas that's been talked about for a number of years, and I'm sure it'll probably get talked about again at some point tonight, is a bypass. Now, that's something that I know has been talked about, I think probably for well over a decade, long before I was ever in office. And if I remember correctly, part of the problem at the time was that they, the funding was just not there. That was part of the issue. So I know that one of the, the solutions that a lot of people propose is the bypass, but at this particular moment in time, it's not financially feasible. And then the other thing I want to say with respect to that is if, if we did go ahead putting in a bypass around the city, that would mean that we would have to buy up land. And what do you do when you have a farmer or somebody who lives out in the country who does not want to sell their property? Does the government have to come in at that point and exercise eminent domain? Well, that's something that I'm completely uncomfortable with. I would never support the government forcing somebody to give up their land. So I think that there are a number of alternative solutions that we can attempt before we consider anything that massive. Thank you.
Good job.
Okay. Judy, what would you say?
Yeah. We really are at the mercy of State Highway. You know, it is their road. But that being said, you know, they have offered some suggestions where we could work very hard to get all the businesses and make it so that the trucks can't come through certain hours of the day. But that just means that they're going to come through at night. So, you know, you, you have to kind of weigh the advantages and the disadvantages. You know, the bypass is always, is always brought up. It's always there. There are a lot of, you know, problems with that, as, you know, Councilwoman Vigliotti said, but we also have to keep in mind that, you know, you look at some of these other really small towns that get bypasses, everybody uses it. It's not just the trucks. It's all the people that you still want to come through Tony Town and kind of look at what businesses we have and stop to eat or, you know, buy their gas. So every little bit needs to be checked out. The speed limit, you know, and again, we do, we write letters to not only the delegation in Annapolis, but to State Highway and, you know, to other things. And I think because we're so far out in the country, they don't take us as seriously. We kind of get put on the back burner because they, you know, they deal with places that really has traffic and high, you know, truck volume. It, I grew, you know, I grew up in Silver Spring, which, you know, is very close to DC. We, you know, that's how our roads were, too. We could still push for more crosswalks. Again, we could slow it down, put in more lights, but then we'll get the other side that complain that it takes too long to get through town and then we'll have people speeding up and down all the side roads. So, you know, you can make some people happy some of the time, but it's just, it's a hard decision.
All right. Ms. Cook, what would you, what would be your suggestions for how to get the trucks out of downtown or to slow them down or quiet them down?
I think I've already answered that, but Mayor McCarron one time said, it sure would be nice to have some business out here for these young people so they don't all have to go down and live in Baltimore. And it seems to me if we had a fleet of small vehicles, it would set up a business for one or two young people.
Ms. Foster?
Unfortunately, Tony Town's downtown is on a state highway. You are never going to get the trucks off of it. Ms. Cook mentioned going to Annapolis. I guess it's been two years ago now that we last went to our annual MML conference that we have in Ocean City. During that conference, there is a part, there's a segment where the governor's whole cabinet meets in a room twice the size. And we each get turns going around talking to them about different issues. The last time I was there, I spoke with Secretary, I keep calling him Secretary Brinkley, about this issue with State Highway. And he put me in touch with somebody at State Highway. I have the man on speed dial. I talk to him so much. They do, when you want things from them, they do studies. If their study doesn't bear out what you want, you don't get it. Don't get me wrong, the State Highway people have been a pleasure to deal with. The gentleman is always nice. Like I said, we talk often. I'm getting ready to talk to him again about another issue, but I've talked to them about what, I forget who alluded to it, traffic calming, which is when you lower the speed limit. Their study showed that when you do that, they have to prove that, in other words, the truckers have to have another way around to get to where they're going without messing with their time. We don't have, okay, we don't have a bypass, is what I was going to say.
Just a quick follow-up on that from the state's end of it for a study. Does anybody know, and I know Barbara probably wouldn't have that information, when a traffic study was last done on Baltimore Street?
Probably a year and a half now.
I was going to say it was pretty recent.
Yeah.
Yeah. And in fact, I talked to him.
Can I add one thing about the bypass? Just one comment. There are other studies that show that bypasses kill your downtown business. There are other studies that show that bypasses kill your downtown business. So what do you want?
Yeah. That Judy alluded to that. And they have that at Hampstead.
Well, we'll see how things, Hampstead has their bypass and.
There was another hand back there who graciously allowed the young man to go.
So I just had a quick question. I know we've talked a lot about the bypass. We've talked about parking. We've talked about things that there aren't things for the kids to do around here. Everybody has, and if you ever get on any of the Facebook forums, there's always complaints, you know, you can't make everybody happy. But how do we get the citizens involved? I mean, just a forum like tonight, there aren't that many people that showed up tonight. People complain about not knowing about information, but yet they don't watch the council meetings. How do, how do you guys propose that we can get the citizens involved and participate in making changes and not just complaining about them?
Judy, we'll start with you. What would you do? What would you do to get the citizenry more involved? And I will, I will say from, from my personal perspective is that I don't think the city does a good job of communicating with its residents. So start from that premise. What would you do to improve that?
I think we have to be better at making things easier to access, and I think that things have to be repeated everywhere. You know, even I sometimes have issues when trying to navigate our website, you know, and I know where things are, and it's still, I find it a little difficult. I think things need to be kind of made simpler. You know, we have the newspaper that comes out that has so much information in it, and I know most people don't even bother to open it. You know, it just, they don't even look at it. I think a lot gets lost in, in translation. We put things on Facebook, but then you get the people that say, "Well, I didn't see it," or "I'm not on Facebook." You know, we've talked about doing an information board actually on City Hall, but not everybody comes downtown. So I just think we probably will have to just overwhelm them with the information through every social media possible, as well as, you know, you know, I would love for people to just spread the word, use word of mouth, but, you know, they talk about everything else. Why aren't they, you know, talking about meetings and stuff like that? You would think after this last year, you know, with every meeting being pretty much livestreamed, that people would watch. You're sitting at home. You're, you know, you can do that. I just, I'm not sure if people just aren't interested or if they, like in a lot of places, are just depending on people to take care of things for them. So it is, it's, I think maybe we need to just reach out and say, "How do you get your information and how can we get it to you better?"
Ms. Cook, what would you do to improve communications from the city to, to the city residents?
I'm not sure it's possible. In every organization, there is a small group of people that take on the majority of the work and change. However, I would never give up. I'd keep trying. And when we have things in Memorial Park, when they had the hot air balloons come in here, that was very well attended. But I don't think there's an easy answer.
Fair enough. Ms. Foster, how would you improve communications from the city to the residents?
Well, I agree with Councilwoman Fuller. You just have to keep repeating it on every media that you have. People don't read newspapers anymore, but you put it there, you put it on Facebook. I tried to make sure that our IT manager posts a lot of things that I think would be of interest to our citizens on our website. It's just like word of mouth. We've been having council meetings virtually for how many months? Thirteen, fourteen? Nobody ever calls in. I remember saying to our previous mayor when people were yelling at us about the water rates, and we have budget sessions every year. Our financial people come in and talk to us and tell us where we stand and how things are and what we need to do. And I remember saying to, and that helps determine, you know, our rates. And I remember saying to the previous mayor, "You know, we ought to have a budget 101 and invite the public." And he said, "You know, that's a good idea." I said, "But nobody would come." I mean, it's boring. People don't want to hear that, but they would understand why things are the way they are. So I just say, just keep repeating and repeating and repeating it everywhere that you can.
Mr. Vigliotti, how would you answer this question?
Well, I think we would continue on in our current stead and continue to reach out and expand the multitude of ways in which we do communicate with the public. I think it's important to remember that approximately eight to 10 years ago, before I was first elected and then through the course of my first term, the city had a negligible social media presence at best. We were barely on Facebook. We barely did anything online. The website, as was alluded to previously, looked like it was from the 1990s because that's really roughly about the time that it was from. So over the course of the last eight years, we have taken a number of serious strides, right? We've improved our Facebook presence. We're on Twitter. We're on YouTube. We're live streaming our meetings. Even before the pandemic, we were recording every single one of our meetings so that if you couldn't make the meeting, you could still watch it at your will. There are, you know, we were about to revamp the entire Tawny Town record so that it's more reader-friendly. We, you know, another thing that, you know, the current council has started to do that was not done years and years ago. When I give you my business card, it's got my personal cell phone number on it. I don't have an official city councilman Facebook page. That's my personal page. You know, we all try to make ourselves as accessible as possible. That includes attending events. That includes participating in the events. For example, a perfect example is during the holiday season on Small Business Saturday, I make it a point to get to every single possible business I humanly can that day to talk to the businesses, not just to talk to the owners, but to talk to residents who are shopping, to talk to, even to people who are from outside of town. So I think that continuing on in the present form is important, and as was also alluded to, we just have to keep at it. You know, we may not be able to reach everybody, but we'll be able to reach somebody, and it's better that we reach somebody than we don't reach anybody at all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, Chris, come on up with another question.
So as far as the trucks go and stuff like that, I know you said there's budget constraints there and that if, you know, the trucks weren't coming through, some of the other traffic wouldn't come through, and the town would be dead. But the problem right now is the town is pretty dead. We have, if its own citizens don't want to come through downtown, I don't know how you expect others to come into the town and want to walk down those streets, want to park down those streets and stuff like that. And, you know, you guys gave, you guys gave pretty good answers, mainly budget constraints and stuff like that, but the problem is, it seems like you've almost given up on the problem. And I guess my question is, what would you do to actually fight to get these kinds of chains, changes out in the town? Because without these changes, the town's not going to grow. It's going to continue to lay dormant, and it is just not, the downtown's not ever going to revitalize like that, like how you guys are talking about.
Barbara, this goes, starts with you.
You get to start, yes, Barbara.
Could you make that into a question?
Basically, he's saying, what would you do about the situation to work with it? What is your ideas?
As far as getting.
Kind of get your gist?
People to want to come downtown.
Did that get your gist?
Even with the trucks and the traffic and.
Okay.
Like, how can you fix it?
Trying to get into a form of a question here.
Yeah, sorry. The question is mainly, for instance, when I'm told no on something, I look for creative ways to get around it. As far as the trucks and stuff go, I know that, you know, you said it's this, it's the State's Highway coming through. Is there not creative ways to slow down trucks? Is there not cameras that can be put up to give tickets? Is there not more crosswalks we can put up? Because the main thing is that if you make it inconvenient for the trucks to come through town, yes, some other people are going to face inconveniences coming through as well. But the thing is, like, if they want to be in downtown, I mean, they'll come through the inconvenience of going through a crosswalk, right? If they want to go shopping in downtown. But if you make it inconvenient for the trucks to come through, they will eventually slow, slow down, stop coming through or go around or find a different way around. And again, my question is, what will, what is your plan besides saying, you know, budget constraints, stuff like that? What is your actual, like, how will you actually fight to get these kinds of changes out? Because again, the town is dying without being able to actually go through the downtown.
Well, when you get children involved, you also get the parents and you get the grandparents. And so having things for children will get at least for each child, three to five people in. And so we could have the arts. We could have children have art shows. We could have children put on music. I think I've answered this somewhat.
Okay. Diane, any more ideas about ways that we can try to make the downtown more pedestrian-friendly?
Any more wisdom from the state?
I was going to say I can keep bugging them at State Highway, but what I do is, like I said, I got the man on speed dial. When he says no to one thing or a study comes back and said, "This is why we can't do this," then, you know, the wheels start spinning. I said, "Well, can we do this?" You know, I try to come up with different things because, like I said, it's a State Highway. It is what it is. The last thing that, I think, I'm trying to remember, did that one come back? I tried to get like a calming crosswalk on Baltimore Street where the kids cross. And I don't remember if that study came back, but I do know they have to study it and they have to determine, is there enough traffic coming through at the, you know, time that the kids are there, that you want this crosswalk? But that was the latest thing that I came up with. But I just have to just keep trying to come up with new things and ask them, "Can we do this? Can we do that?"
Councilwoman Vigliotti?
Well, I can certainly promise you that none of us have given up, and I certainly will not give up either. You know, to associate myself again with what Mayor Protem Foster had talked about, it's tenacity and persistence when it comes to dealing with State Highway. They may keep turning us down. Well, we're going to keep coming back and we're going to keep asking them. You know, we, we hear the concerns. We experience them ourselves, and, you know, we certainly want to alleviate these problems. You know, again, I had mentioned a little earlier some, some different ideas such as lowering the speed limits, adding stop signs, maybe another stoplight. Again, Mayor Protem Foster alluded to a calming crosswalk. I know one of the things that we've also talked about, actually just within the last couple of meetings, are improved lighting, improved demarcation of crosswalks to let traffic coming through know that, hey, there's a crosswalk here. You need to slow down. And of course, the, the police, whenever we do say, hey, we currently have a problem with this neighborhood or we currently have a problem with that neighborhood with the speeding, they go and they, you know, set up and they take care of it. But the difficulty always is, is that as soon as they, you know, let up on the speed trap, the speed picks up again. So I can promise you from the bottom of my heart, we are not giving up on this. Again, it's tenacity, it's persistence, and unfortunately, it, it seems like it's a revolving circle sometimes, but it's not always the case, and we are not going to give up. So thank you for that.
Ms. Fuller?
I think one of the things that we have to keep in mind is a lot of those, like, dump trucks are there because of the construction at both that Meads Crossing, Meadow Brook and Tawny Town Crossing. Like, they're going to be there regardless. They're, you know, that's, and for truckers, time is money. There just aren't roads out there that, you know, make it feasible for them to go around because it's such a distance out of the way that they're, they're just, they're not willing to do it. They need to get where they need to be. You know, but like everybody's alluded to, we haven't given up. We do still constantly talk about it. We, when we go to the conferences, we talk to other cities. We, you know, have these, you know, group meets where we all say, okay, here's the problems we experienced. Have any of you had them? Have you solved them? Have you got any ideas? But again, if people would come to the meetings and would communicate with us, if somebody has ideas, we're always willing to listen. I mean, the doors are always open. All they have to do is say, "Look, I've got a solution." And we'll listen. It's, we don't shoot people down just for the sake of shooting them down. We want to fix it too. So, you know, if there's a place that has a solution, we'll take it. We just don't want to do it, you know, and have detrimental effects on something else. Everything does have to be thought out. The last time they did the traffic study, my husband and I were out there putting Christmas decorations up, and we talked to the guy, you know, and he sat there and he watches the traffic during certain hours. And he says, "Well, I don't really see a problem." You know, so how do we change their minds with, this is what they do? You know, we spoke with them and he said, "Well, here's your options. You could put a turn lane in, but now you've lost parking." Well, we take away that parking and we get hell for it. Like, people have a fit. So it is, we always are trying to, to figure out, and we haven't given up.
All right. Thank you guys for, for those answers. I do have one suggestion for Councilwoman Foster. You can invite that gentleman to come spend a weeknight at Georgia's On York. And at 6:30 in the morning, when the logging trucks go rolling through and hitting the Jake brakes coming to the stoplight, and he gets bounced out of bed by the vibration, maybe he'll get the, get the hint.
I'll tell him.
He'll even volunteer the night for that.
Chris, can I, can I make one follow-up comment? This is, I give everybody else equal time if you want to give them other time, but there is, persistence does pay off. And I was just remembering something. My, my first term in office, we had a concerned citizens group come to us with concern, they were deeply concerned about Mayberry Road, and they wanted to see somewhere along that stretch of 140 between here and Westminster, an additional traffic light put in. And while we, as the city of Tawny Town, did not have any authority to do that ourselves, we were able to work with them, steer them in the right direction and lend them our support, and then a light did end up going up there ultimately. So, you know, going back to what everybody has, has mentioned here, it's the tenacity, it's the persistence, it's keeping on something. And then, you know, where you're able to lend a helping hand, even if you're not able to directly influence the situation itself, matters.
We're going to let that stand on its own because I think that was a, more of a suggestion from you to us than, than any kind of campaign question. So I'm going to send it over now to Bob because Bob just received a.
I am not technological, as you can tell by my flip phone, but I did get a text from a lady who's watching the show. And her name is Michelle Mar, and her question is prefaced by saying, "Speeding through the neighborhoods." I see this in the newspaper all the time. "I live on Kenan Street, and it's a challenge getting in and out of my driveway safely due to the speeding cars. They are even now running the four-way stop sign. What would your plan be to address this issue?" Joe, you just touched on it a minute ago, but I'm sorry, it's Diane's turn to start.
Well, I'm sure as I speak, Joe will have reported this to the police department. But, yeah, that's what we would do about residential speeding. We would make our Tawny Town police aware of it, and they would check it out.
And as I say, Joe alluded to that just a few minutes ago, but.
Right, so I.
You had it again.
So again, yeah, again, to apologize at risk of repeating myself, but, you know, part of the thing is that for the individual who's watching, you know, when you see a problem, please get in touch with us or please get in touch with the police department because a situation can't be addressed unless they know about it. And I can tell you right now that, you know, I will get a concern about speeding on any given street. I will pass it along to the chief as quickly as possible. They are made aware of the situation, and as rapidly as possible, they go out to set up a speed trap. They are very, very proficient at taking care of citizens' concerns when they come in, but they have to know what those concerns are, and they do have to come in. You know, again, when I, when I pick up the phone and I call the chief, I mean, you know, if he, if he doesn't pick up right away, he's. if he doesn't pick up right away, he's back to me as soon as he can be. If I send him an email saying, hey, we have a problem with this road in this street, by the end of the day, he says, hey, we're working on it. And then every so often, I will hear back from a resident who says, yeah, we saw the police out, and thank you very much for letting them know that we needed help here. So that's the best advice that I can give in a situation like that, is please let any of us know, or please let the police know. Thank you.
Judy?
Coming as a mother of teenagers, I kind of enjoy on Facebook when people publicly shame people. And I know that's terrible, and that's not the only solution. I have a stop sign behind my house, and people consistently run through it. It's a one-way street. They're constantly coming down the wrong way. And my husband will get out there, and he'll stop them, and he'll make them back up because he's had enough. You know, the police officers do a fantastic job with what they have, but they can't be at all these places at once. So I do think it's really important for people to reach out and say, you know, we seem to have that problem, you know, consistently at 5:00 on weekend nights, or on, you know, in the mornings, or whatever it is. I have sworn I'm going to get video cameras out, and I'm going to start videotaping people and take it up there with the license, you know, plates, and say, look, just go tell them. Cut it out. You know, even if you don't ticket them, just say, look, we're watching you. I don't understand people's need to break those laws. It's very selfish, self-serving, unnecessary, you know, and it just, again, as a parent of teenagers, I get very, very upset because I don't want my kids out on the road with people like that. It just makes no sense to me at all.
Ms. Cook?
I think we've hashed that over quite enough.
I would say that we have certainly spoken a lot about that. And I will, I will say a couple of things on that issue. I do see, a lot of times, I will see that brought up on the Facebook pages, on the community pages. And I also know that it's an issue when the traffic backs up, you know, on the hours that the State Highway traffic guy isn't there, when it backs up from the light all the way back past Trevannion, that people go up Roberts Mill, and they'll go, you know, or they'll cut across Roth and Kenan that way. You know, these things happen, and it's not, it's not good. We need to look at what we can do to try to fix that. Let's get back on track here with another question. We're going to change gears a little bit. Yes, I'm sorry, I didn't realize we had a gentleman from the audience.
He had his hand up earlier, and I asked him to hold while we did the text question.
I want to make another comment on the subject that I brought up before. I'm sitting there thinking about how many potholes could be filled for $155,000. Now, I read in the newspaper, probably the town paper, where you did build a gazebo. But I don't believe I read where the amount of money was. Where's the transparency here? Most of the people in Tawny Town don't know how much you spent for that gazebo. And I believe they care. And my follow-up question that I wanted to say the first time is, go over each one of you, answer this. Do you believe any taxpayer expenditure is a citizen's business?
I think that that's a valid question. And I think, I'm going to rephrase it just a little bit to what can be done to increase the transparency of the city business. You know, we'll start, I think we start with Joe?
Start with Joe.
Start with Joe this time.
Well, no, I agree with that completely. Any expenditure that comes from the city are taxpayer dollars. The idea of transparency is particularly important to me. And every year, we have budget workshops. We have a multi-month-long process of going through the budget. We even go into specialized meetings over the course of the year about capital projects, capital improvement projects. These are all public documents, they're all publicly viewable. If you are interested in any one of those documents, all you have to do is call City Hall and say, hey, I'd like a copy of the 2020 six-year capital project plan. I was actually looking at that earlier this evening before I came here. As a matter of fact, I think that, I'm not sure if that one in particular is up yet, but we've also, with the updating of our website some years ago, and as Councilwoman Fuller had talked about, I want to see the website updated again. We're also publishing these sorts of things on the internet. So you don't even have to call in to ask for the documents. You can pull it up in a PDF and read it for yourself. And of course, you know, coming down to the very ground level of it is that, you know, I had mentioned earlier, my personal cell phone number is on my business card. I try to make myself as accessible to people as humanly possible. And people are always welcome to get in touch with me if they have questions, and I will get them answers as, you know, as soon as I can. Thank you.
Councilwoman Fuller?
Well, as I say, just all of the costs are mentioned at the meeting when we go over it because they have to present it to us. And so that's what they tell us. They tell us how much it's going to cost, what we're supposed to get. And again, it's, everything is there, you just have to ask for it. So if you want to know those things, even if we don't know, we're pretty good about trying to find out and get back to you if we can. I know Joe gets a lot of requests because he really, really does put himself out there for everything. And I don't think I've ever seen him not say, I'll get back to you. You know, if people ask me questions, I do the same thing. You know, again, the gazebo, to me, was kind of a fluke because it did not happen the way it should have, just as far as the building. Because there was issues all, the complete, oh, the total way, from start to finish, there were issues that made it not be, it's not even what it was supposed to look like because things changed. So that being said, you know, everything was transparent at the meetings if, you know, if you wanted to see it there.
Ms. Cook?
Well, some, somewhere, I saw that number either published, or I was at a council meeting, and they gave the number. And it was about a year and a half ago. And it seems to me, this was a thank you or a tribute to a man that gave 35 years of service to Tawny Town. So what it ever, whatever it is, he sure didn't get paid a lot of money for those 35 years.
Diane?
Well, like everybody has said before me, if you ask, we'll tell you. If you ask us, and we can't spit the figure out right away, we'll find out, and we'll make sure that you know. Like Councilwoman Fuller said, Councilwoman Fuller said. If you're at these meetings, they give us these figures in our packet. We go over them, we verbalize them. If you're there, you will know what a certain thing costs. We have these budget workshops. We go over the budget line by line. It's a public meeting. You're welcome to come. You can ask us questions. Well, wait a minute, at the budget workshop, we don't take the questions. But we go over this stuff, the council does, line by line. When we have questions, we ask them of the staff. And the staff explains them to us, or gives us the figures.
So you wouldn't say what one elected official said, it's none of your business?
No, of course not.
All right, thank you. I'm going to, like I said, start to change gears just a little bit. What is being done to match population growth with increased services? And these aren't just city services, but increased services like urgent care, restaurants, things that people need downtown. We're, you know, they're putting up houses as fast as they can build them, and people are moving into them. What are we doing to match that population growth with not only city services, but also the service sector in the economy? And we start with Ms. Fuller.
So I think the main thing is, like, with the businesses, you know, if you're talking about the urgent care or whatever it is. I know that I've gone up to do the bloodwork at the little place up there in the strip mall. There was nobody there. So I think that each business comes in, and they kind of look at a need, and, you know, how much business they're going to get. I think it has to make sense for them. Unfortunately for us, Westminster is very close. You know, Gettysburg is considered close. Frederick is even considered close. So a lot of the places that are in those cities don't want to come here because it doesn't make sense to them economically. So I think with our new director, he's really going to push for some of those businesses to start coming. We, as a council, would definitely incentivize any way that we can, you know, because we do want those services, and we do want to offer things for the citizens. You know, we finally got the park impact fees established so that new growth also brings in money for the parks to extend those. So we can offer more services in the parks and expand. We do look at those things, both at the City Council and at the Planning Commission. We try to figure out ways to, you know, make those things work. But again, it's a hard road to travel. But I have every faith that Jay Nishi is going to jump all over the opportunity to try to talk people into coming.
Ms. Cook, what can we do to match the population growth to a growth in services?
I can't answer that at this time.
Okay. Ms. Foster?
The last urgent care that we had here did not stay. We talked to the people at Life Bridge about that. And they said that they did not get the use of the place to make it work. Like Ms. Councilwoman Fuller said, all these other places are so close. People are established at the other places, and that's where they go. They could not get the clientele that they needed in order to stay here. We tried as best we could to talk them into staying, but it just would not work. Now, as you said, that the houses are going up, and the population's going up, I'm sure we will revisit it and see if, maybe with another company, we can at least get another urgent care here. But the one that was here did not stay because they did not get the business.
Vigliotti?
So going off of both what Councilwoman Fuller had mentioned and what Mayor Pro Tem Foster had talked about, you know, obviously, losing the one healthcare center was, you know, certainly problematic for us. We are, however, some of us are still in touch with members of Life Bridge, and we are continuing to urge them to reconsider the decision to close. And they've actually been very amenable to reconsidering. Obviously, as the Mayor Pro Tem had talked about, it has to do with population and making sure to have the right, having enough clientele to, you know, substantiate the keeping opening, or keeping open of the facility. So it is something that they are very interested in revisiting. They're under a, they're under new management. And so that's part of why they are interested in reconsidering. In terms of services that we are providing, we have something called Adequate Facilities Ordinance, which states that for every 1,000 residents, we need at least two police officers. And we are at the point where we do need to add more police officers. So as the population increases and as revenue to the city increases, we're going to be able to add more police officers. And of course, the associated cost with that for equipment, for vehicles, that's going to go along with it. So as the population grows, we're able to expand the police department. And I think there was, there was one other, one of the things that we've dealt with recently was the, was trash and recycling. So the rates for recycling have gone up recently. And initially, we were projected, because those rates had gone up, we were projected to have a $356,000 shortfall in the budget because of the increase of the rates. But working with city staff, we were able to determine the accurate number for that. And we're going to be paying roughly $56,000 additionally every year. But as the population grows and revenues increase, we'll be able to take that. And one of the decisions that we all made was that this year, we were going to eat that $56,000 and not raise taxes on people. Thank you.
Everybody likes hearing not raising taxes.
All right, so we're going to go, I think, we're going to try to go two more questions, and then we're going to go to closing statements. First question, what would you change about how city government works? And actually, I believe we start now with Ms. Cook. What would you like to see changed about how city government works?
By and large, I feel like they're doing a very good job. They have certain handicaps that they are working under. But I have to compliment them.
Ms. Fuller, or Foster?
We have a small city staff, but a very competent, hard-working city staff. I don't think there is anything I would change about the way that they work. As Councilwoman Vigliotti said, when you, the front office staff works very hard. They deal with people on a daily basis. They deal with people, I feel, in a very professional manner. And they get the job done. Our police get the job done. Our public works guys get the job done. Our city manager is wearing two hats at the present time. So I don't think I would change anything. Maybe get a planning person in there to alleviate some of what he has to do. That I would do. And I'm looking forward to that happening soon. But I think our staff works beautifully the way they are.
Mr. Vigliotti, how would you change how city government works?
Well, first of all, I just want to repay the compliment to Ms. Cook. You know, it's always a pleasure to see you at meetings when we have the meetings in person, and I'm always grateful for your input and for your questions. So thank you for those. As far as the city government is concerned, since Judy, myself, and Diane were re-elected in 2017, we kind of, you know, we've pushed for almost a continuous improvement process with city government. And it's easy to talk about that kind of stuff. But when you get into the mechanics of it, it actually makes a lot more sense in constantly finding ways to improve things. I will give you a brief example. One of the things that we've addressed over the course of the last year is inflow and infiltration into our sewer systems. So our wastewater treatment facility, on a daily basis, has a capacity of 1.1 million gallons per day. In 2018, because of our aging sewer structure, the water plant was, I'm sorry, the wastewater treatment facility was processing 1.244 million gallons per day. But because we enacted policies, because we pursued cost-saving measures to reinforce the pipes, because we pursued inflow and, inflow, excuse me, because we inflow and infiltration abatement, we were able to, so in 2020, I'm getting a little ahead of myself, so in 2020, we were taking in 1.244 million gallons per day. Last year, we'd reduced that number to 736,000. And that was a process of the city government, the city administration, city staff, the Public Works Department, and contractors coming together to look at a problem, to find a solution, and to solve it. And of course, when you have a better functioning sewer system, that means we're not expending as much money. And of course, that means that water and sewer rates don't have to go up. It may not be the most exciting thing to talk about, but those are the sorts of improvements that we've been seeing over the last couple of years. Thank you.
And Judy?
I'll kind of just continue with what Joe was saying. You know, we are always looking through each department to decide, you know, how to make them more efficient. And we really do have great department heads and employees who will bring ideas and, you know, suggestions forward, and say, our jobs would be easier, and we'd be more effective if we could do things a certain way. You know, fixing the water lines is a huge deal. It's expensive upfront, but long-term, it saves us money, and we can continue on. You know, just government in general, as far as improvements go. I mean, I would like to see people, I guess, view us as being more approachable. I would like to see more conversations. I would like to see people be more involved. You know, it's, it's, not that I want a whole lot of competition, and I appreciate the fact that Barbara comes, you know, comes out tonight, but the fact that there's only four people running for three positions, to me, is disappointing. I would think that more people would want to have a say in what goes on in their community. You know, and in order to do that, you have to be involved. And I think people need to be, I don't want to say more. be, I don't want to say more interested, but they have to care. They have to care about what goes on in their community, and we, as government officials, you know, should facilitate that.
Okay. I have two comments on what we've been talking about. One has been a communication issue. It's filtered through a lot of the questions tonight. And I understand from the citizen's standpoint, and I understand from the government's standpoint, I'm an outsider. I volunteer in town. I don't live in town. I'm not here 24/7. But, everybody has to remember that communication's a two-way street. You can't address speeding problems or issues if somebody didn't tell you about them. The other thing, as to the staff, my commendation to the staff goes back to the reaction that the city government and the staff made when the gentleman tried to make City Hall a drive-thru, and you scattered in the, in the services, but everything was still accessible. And I didn't hear anybody say, "Well, I can't find this, and I can't find that." Of course, one of my favorite sayings is, "There's never a shortage of people to tell you where to go, so all you got to do is ask." But, I think that was commendable, working that staff under those circumstances, and everything still moved along. And, just, okay, remarkable. Do I have any more questions? Because I've got one over here.
If you've got one over there, go ahead.
All right. This is a question that I have heard constantly as I talk to business people, as I talk to individuals, nonprofits, whatever they are. And I know you've heard this before, so you're going to hear it again. Please define to me what your definition of Main Street is. The definitions I hear across town, there are some people who believe Main Street goes from Trevannion Road to Memorial Park. There are other people who believe Main Street goes from the bowling alley to Memorial Park and from Evapco to Hitchman. So, my question is, what is your definition of Main Street? And we're back to Ms. Foster to start it off.
Main Street is, God, I was just looking at those boundaries the other day. I believe, if I've got this right, it starts at, it goes as far as Trinity Church down to, is that Country Kitchen? And over as far, and over a bit down, well, these are the places that can get Main Street money. Over as far on 194 as, what's that business that's down there? Down Cherry Tree? Or is it further? And it goes down to St. Joseph's Church.
That's the technical map description.
Yeah, that's the map of Main Street, but we tend to think of Main Street as just downtown.
I kind of want to expand on this question real quickly.
But, the boundaries go a little beyond that.
Right. And there's a perception question, and I think that what Bob is speaking to is not necessarily the, you know, what the Department of Economic Development or whatever from the state says, "Main Street goes from here to here, from here to here, and these are the businesses that get any kind of funding." What is your perception of what Main Street should be? And what is, what is Main Street from a, from a town point of view? Not so much what necessarily the Department of whatever says it is. What is Main Street to you? And I'll let you go again.
Well, Main Street was developed so that the businesses along downtown could thrive. So, that's the way it was developed. Like I said, over the years, it's like 20-some years old. Over the years, the map got drawn a little bigger, and so it stretches out a little further. These are the people that can get money from the state of Maryland under the Main Street umbrella. So, your business would be included. The Tannery Barn down 195 would be included. And the businesses from Trinity down to Country Kitchen, Ben &amp; Best, I keep saying, Country Kitchen.
It's okay.
Would be considered under that Main Street umbrella.
Okay. But, what is your definition of Main Street? That's what we're trying to find out. What do the elected officials of this town consider Main Street? I know what the state does. We've heard that infinitum.
Well, I'm, I'm the economic development person, so I'd consider it what I just said.
Okay. Okay. Joe?
Well, speaking from a purely personal standpoint, I would consider any Main Street in any town in America the heart of that small town. There is something utterly quintessential and quintessentially American about a Main Street, because if you look back through history, those were the, that really was the hub of any town, of any municipality, of any city. There really is something enchanting about that, something enchanting about the way the towns used to be built around Main Streets. There's a book written, I don't know how many, it's probably almost a century ago now about this, at this point, that talked about how you could trace the developments of any town or municipality or city in the country based on where Main Street was originally beginning. And based on the decade and based on the layout of the town, you could tell what decade, the next wave of growth occurred in the town. But, so, obviously, last year has, the last year has certainly thrown a wrench in a lot of things, but I remember 2017 to 2018, the businesses on Main Street, a lot of them got together and said that we are going to do Friday nights out every, every month. I forget whether it was every single week or just once a month. But, so, what that meant was that these businesses were going to stay open later than they usually would. They were going to try, they were going to try to attract customers downtown. They were going to offer sales, discounts, activities for families, for kids, and I attended as many of those as I could. And attending that, you really do get a sense of what it means to live in small-town America. You run into people you know. You're able to make purchases at some of the stores, and you just really get this, this sense of this, this beautiful American timelessness, and that's the sort of thing that I would love to see rejuvenated. And, of course, owing to what Mayor Protem Foster said, and I know that, you know, Councilwoman Fuller and Mrs. Cook will probably feel the same way, and want to get back to it.
Judy?
So, I kind of look at it a little bit differently. I separate it into historic, you know, Main Street, and then, to me, you know, Tawnytown's Main Street would go all the way out to the bowling alley. I think every business along that strip is just, you know, a very important part of what makes Tawnytown Tawnytown. They all, you know, contribute things, they bring people to the city, they offer services. And I know that in, you know, some of our grant writing and some of the maps, and, you know, we do different things, we also are trying to expand it out to include more, because it really is. I mean, in this day and age, it's, you know, it isn't just about where you can walk. It includes where you can drive. So, I think any of those businesses along that main strip and on 194.
Ms. Cook?
Are we just giving our personal opinion?
Yes. Your definition.
How would you define Main Street in?
I would say from Antrim Inn to Memorial Park, and the other way, from the Catholic Church down to there's another little church. That's my thought.
Okay. Good enough. So, I believe that we are done with questions. It's.
Unless there's another one from the audience.
Anybody else?
We'll give the audience one more shot.
I have one more.
You're going to go for the triple? All right.
So, one of the problems I've had, as I'm trying to start a small business in Tawnytown, is finding a space to start a small business in Tawnytown. When you look at the strip mall, for instance, the majority of the strip mall is now antique stores, and some of the downtown is antique stores. I think Tawnytown has three physical therapies. I think there's three pizzerias in Tawnytown. The thing is that there's a lot of repeat business in Tawnytown and nothing new coming in, and part of that is because finding a space that wasn't already filled out to be a medical office or one that has enough space for a business to start at is almost, it's pretty hard, if not impossible, right now. So, I guess my question is, what would you do to further, I guess, the places where businesses can start in Tawnytown? Because without places to start, you won't get new businesses.
And we start with Joe.
Well, that's actually a really good question. One of the difficulties that we've had in the last couple of months as we've been without an economic development director is being able to help direct people who are prospective business owners to where they can and can't operate. One of the responsibilities of the economic development director is to keep track of what buildings are up for sale or what buildings are up for rents, and to help steer prospective or prospective business owners in the right direction. As Councilwoman Fuller and Mayor Protem Foster have both talked about at some point this evening, our new economic development director is a really good guy. He's really into getting himself involved with businesses and prospective businesses. Of course, we, as council members, through communication with them, should also do our best to stay aware of those things. And again, it comes back to this idea that, you know, if you have a question, you know, please don't hesitate to ask any one of us. If we don't have the information, we can get it for you, or we can certainly send you to the, to the right place. In terms of trying to make sure that there are, I think maybe part of what you had said was, we have a lot of repeat businesses. So, one of the things that I've found is that there are a number of businesses that are open in town that fill what you would call a niche, where it's something that is unique to the area. It's something that, you know, as Councilwoman Fuller had talked about, maybe Westminster doesn't have, maybe Frederick doesn't necessarily have. So, for example, we have an amazing dance studio in town. It's been here for over 16 years at this point. We have an amazing pottery shop that opened up across the street from the police station. We've never had something like that in that capacity before. And, of course, we have an amazing bed and breakfast in town that we have, and I can't remember the last time we had one, if we ever had one before this. Again, I've only been at this for two terms, but, you know, any business that can fill a niche is certainly, any business at all is going to be welcome, period. But, if you have a prospective business that really does fill a niche, that's an uncommon business, that's certainly going to help recommend itself to the success of the business. Sorry about that.
All right. Judy?
I will never understand how people decide which businesses they're going to frequent. I mean, you know, we had, what, a Burger King here ages ago, and that closed down, whether it was just bad management, whatever it is. But, then you open a Dunkin' Donuts, and there's a line around the block. So, it's completely dependent on what people want in this city, because they are going to be the main ones who are coming. We had a gentleman come quite a few years ago who made suggestions for making our Main Street better and more effective, and one of them was to figure out ways to get some of those, you know, residential private properties to switch over so that maybe their residential rental part is on top with a rear entrance, and they use the bottom part for businesses. You know, we would love for that to be something that happened, but I think it's got to be made beneficial for the owner of the building. So, you know, they're going to be looking for businesses that they know are going to make money and that you're going to stay, and, you know. So, I think everything is just kind of dependent on the market and how the business does. But, again, having our, you know, director here now, he's going to be really front and center for helping people that have businesses find appropriate places for them to go. I don't know if you've spoken to him yet, and, you know, if he's been helpful to you at all, but, I mean, yeah, I think as far as we are concerned, we are all about having new businesses come in and open.
Ms. Cook?
Well, because of the COVID being shut down, I haven't been able to attend a council meeting in a year, so I feel that I'm behind the eight ball, and so I feel like maybe I just better skip this one.
Okay. Councilwoman Foster?
Okay. Please, if you have a business, a business that you're interested in opening, by all means, please contact our, Mr. Jay Mieschi, who is our new economic development director. He is very interested in assisting new business. In the past, you mentioned the shopping center.
Yeah, the strip mall by McDonald's.
Yeah. Okay. In the past, the rents in that mall seem to run rather high.
Yeah, because it's super hot.
And that's why we have trouble steering people to that strip mall. When we do, we find that the rents are way more than people can or want to pay. But, please, contact our new economic development director and speak with him about what it is you're interested in, and he will direct you to what else we may have.
Okay. All right. We're going to go to some closing statements now. I think we've run our course of questions, and we will start with.
We'll start with Judy, and you have three minutes, like you did for the opening, to do a closing remark, address any of the issues that you want to enlighten everybody, or expand on your first answer, and give them a reason to vote for you again on May 3 at the police station from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m.
You just said everything I needed to say. Yeah, I think that we've, you know, kind of hit on a lot of topics tonight. I think really the most important thing going forward is finding people who are willing to be diligent and think outside the box and continue to fight for the city, but with the understanding that, you know, this isn't a cut-and-dry kind of scenario. It does take time. It does take a lot of cooperation, and you have to work with a lot of people and a lot of, you know, different factors that may not always be your favorite part. I have really, I've learned a lot in the last four years. I've enjoyed it. I've enjoyed meeting people, and I would like to continue forward, you know, trying to figure out ways to get the community more involved, bring everybody into what we do, and just make things work better for the city long-term.
Ms. Cook?
Well, I'm going to go back to, I want to preserve the history and the buildings of downtown. I see coming up from 97, 27, 32, and 15, we're being surrounded in the military, that's called a pincher move, and in football, it's called an end run. And I feel that within 30 years, Tawnytown could be totally destroyed. So, I'm going back to this plan that I have, and I feel like it takes at least $2 million to start it, and I would be able, be willing to go out and hunt up that money to get it started so that we could preserve downtown Tawnytown. I feel that Georges on York is the gold standard for every building in Tawnytown. So, that's my plan. So, if we can get a team of horses going, we can make it, because horses are powerful.
Thank you. Councilwoman, Ms. Foster?
First of all, I'd like to thank you all for your attention and your questions tonight and your attendance. I hope I've answered your questions to your satisfaction. If I haven't, please feel free to reach out to me. My email address is D. Foster at tawnytown.org. As was mentioned tonight, if I can't, I will answer you as quickly as I can, and if I don't have the answer immediately, I will see. don't have the answer immediately, I will see that you get it. My plan going forward for the next term, if I am elected, is to work very hard to get some new business in here and support the businesses that we have who have managed to hang on.
Very good. Thank you. Councilwoman Vigliotti?
She gets to wrap up the evening.
Thank you again to my fellow candidates for being here tonight. Thank you again to the Tawny Town Chamber of Commerce for graciously hosting this forum, to the CMC for filming it, and to both of them for choosing to do so each election cycle. Above all, I want to thank everyone who is here or watching this for your time and for your patience. Tonight, I hope you've been able to learn a little bit more about me and where I stand on the issues which not only confront us, but give us opportunities to rise. Looking forward, we have to be determined to continue to meet challenges and keep our town who we are. It's simple. We have to back the police whenever, wherever, and however possible. We have to keep the town family-friendly through our policies, zoning, and recreation events. We have to keep the town business-friendly through our policies and through zoning. We have to be fiscally responsible, be careful about spending, keep paying down debt, and pay for capital projects out of pocket wherever we can. It's a straightforward path forward, but it will take effort and determination. As I've demonstrated with my service and my record since my time in office, I'm committed to continuing down that road. It's all about community and common sense, and it's about believing, too. I still believe with all of my heart that America's best days are ahead, and so too for Tawny Town. With God's help, so long as we reach toward the ever-present light, the morning is as long as we choose to make it. You know me by now, as I always explain, I'm not perfect, and I don't pretend to be. I don't know everything, and so I'm not afraid to ask questions. I'm also not afraid to follow my heart and do what I believe to be right. And I humbly offer that kind of service to you again. May God bless all of you, may God always bless Tawny Town. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you. And I have a few thank yous to close the evening, as I did to open the evenings first, and most importantly, the efforts that you put into this evening as the candidates, the questions that you have fielded, and the answers you have shared. I thank you very much for your cooperation in this. We couldn't have a forum if the candidates don't want to show, so thank you very much. Again, the fire company, thank you for making this building. And I got to tell you, what you did to this building is great. First time I walked into it since you renovated, I thought you'd expanded it somehow without moving the walls outside. It just looked so nice and refrained. And look, on every chair in here tonight is one of these for upcoming events fundraisers for the fire company. Please, take the one on your seat, but take some of the others and pass them around your neighborhood, support the local fire company. As Councilwoman Vigliotti mentioned earlier, the police department and the fire company do a marvelous job, and we couldn't be the community we are without them. Also, again, thanking CMC for once again broadcasting and taping, and we know it was at least one person out there watching, Erin. And thanks to citizens for coming out and sharing your concerns with the candidates. And the last time I'll tell you tonight, please remember, Monday, May 3, 7 to 7, Tawny Town Police Station, turn out for your vote, because if you don't go and vote, then as far as I'm concerned, personal opinion, if you don't vote, you can't complain, because you didn't do anything to change anything. Chris, any closing remarks on your side?
No, I just want to echo all the thank yous to the fire department for making the building available, to the candidates for being here, to you folks here that care in the audience, to anyone watching at home, thank you very much. And I especially want to thank my wife Sharon for coming in at the last minute and operating the clock and handling the internet duties here, and we appreciate everything. We appreciate everything that you all do, putting yourselves out there, we appreciate everyone here in town being concerned enough to come get involved. And I can't stress enough some of the things that were said by the candidates, don't just get involved to here. I understand we're going back to live council meetings next month?
We're hoping to.
No.
There seems to be some difference of opinion, but we'll see, maybe we can get to...
We're trying.
But regardless, you know, there are ways to join in. Make yourselves known, make yourselves heard, because that's the only way things change. So, thank you all, and have a great night.
And as far as contact, I know Diane gave her email address, and I know about the Tawny record, I'm not going to get into the pluses and minuses, but the inside the cover page are all their contact informations that you can get to them about. So...
No excuse.
Speak up.
Thank you, everyone, and good night.
Thank you.